The Chiefs here.
Is it about my parking?
So yeah, so now it's about to turn, call the meeting to order on the microphone, but the next item on our agenda is the election of Board of Education Officers. And I'm turning the gavel over to Ms. Stowe to run the election.
Yes, thank you. Sure. I guess that's why I have to be acting chair for this.
Want the action, action.
Election. All right. Having done this before, I'll walk you guys all through it. But we are going to be electing officers in accordance with policy 9121. And so the floor is now open for nominations for Chair first. Michael Joseph, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Karen Kowalski for the role of Chair. Is this when I say something?
Yeah, it doesn't need a second, so it's up to you.
Okay, so the, just speaking briefly, so Karen, obviously, as we all know, Karen was recently elected, reelected to our board. She was actually elected with the most votes of any candidate on the ballot this year. In her previous term, Karen served as, a term, a year as Vice Chair. She currently is the Policy Chair along with Karen, Karen Hirsch. She was instrumental in drafting our current strategic plan. And she also served as the Board Rep on the Feasibility Committee for the old Greenwich renovation project, which obviously remains a high priority for this board. As Chair, I am confident that she will publicly represent the opinions of the, represent the whole board and rise above sometimes the gamesmanship that unfortunately too often characterizes our local politics and dissuades some of the more partisan tempers in town, while facilitating our conversations in a spirit of collegiality and consensus building. So it's my pleasure to nominate her for the chairmanship.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Ms. Costin?
I would like to nominate Karen Hirsch for Chair.
You want, I know Sophie's, I would like to second. Okay, so do you want to say something?
I would. It is my distinct honor to nominate Karen Hirsch for Chair. I will not call her my oldest friend, but for 20 years now, I've had the privilege to call her my nearest and dearest. And because I have known her so long, I feel most qualified to detail her many years of service in our schools long before she became a Board Member. While our kids overlapped years before elsewhere, Ms. Hirsch and I began our public school journey at Glenville. And in 2011, Karen was elected to the PTA Exec Board at Glenville School. In 2012, she was elected Co-President of the Glenville School PTA where she served until 2014. These were difficult years. I refer to these as the FERB years. And anybody who will recall them would know that it stands for Facility Utilization and Racial Balance. Our town was gripped with fear that our neighborhood schools model would be upended. Emotions were high. This auditorium was packed. And it was an unpleasant time and our PTAs, I would say, were on the front lines during that particularly difficult time. In 2014, she was elected as PTA Council's VP of Student Support, overseeing committees, supporting special education, strategic planning, twice-exceptional learning, and ALP. There may be others, but those are the ones I recall. In 2015, she was elected First VP of PTA Council before being elected PTA Council President, a role she served in from 2017 to 2019 when she joined the Board of Education. Karen was elected in 2019. Hers was actually a competitive race. And she served her first term from 2019 to 2023 when she was just recently reelected. You may wonder why I am reviewing her extensive service resume and wondering why it is important to the task at hand. I will tell you, it's because in the years that Ms. Hirsch devoted her time to advocating for our schools, our students and their families, she also built relationships with others in town government regardless of party affiliation. I have yet to meet anyone who hasn't enjoyed working with her. She was repeatedly elected to leadership positions on these boards because she is a leader. And I can say with authority that not one person on this board, not a single one, has worked with five superintendents except Ms. Hirsch. And she did so seamlessly and collaboratively. I believe experience matters and leadership matters. And that's why I'm supporting Ms. Hirsch for Chair. And I hope you will join me in doing the same.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, what we're now going to ask all of you to do is to record your vote on this pad. Write the person's name and please say for Chair. And Cody, since you're online, can you email it to my board email?
Yep, or can I text it to you?
Um, yeah, that's probably fine.
I think we need a written record, so.
I would say I think you have to, it has to be an email because I think we have to.
All right, I'll email it. That's fine.
So Cody is for Karen Kowalski. Wendy is for Karen Kowalski. Sophie is for Karen Hirsch. Michael Joseph is for Karen Kowalski. Karen Kowalski is for Karen Kowalski. Karen Hirsch is for Karen Hirsch. Laura Costin's for Karen Hirsch. And I'm for Karen Hirsch. So that's four, four. It deadlocks, there's no majority. We cannot proceed with any further officer elections. And I turn this back over to Karen Hirsch as Acting Chair for this meeting.
Did you, does anybody else want to do a re-vote or have a discussion?
I see no need to. Anyone else?
We need to offer.
I just have a clarification question. I think, and I looked at it today. And I just want to make sure everyone is also on the same page. So we have 30 days to, well, the officers have to be elected within 30 days or it goes to, I believe, the first selectmen. So I just want to confirm that everyone's calculation for the 30 days would be 30 days from when the officer, when we were, from when the new board started, which would have been, I believe, the fifteenth of.
I think it's by our next meeting. It's actually for the full Board of Selectmen, not just the first.
Yeah, no, but I know what you're saying, Karen. I did the count. Yes, and we can do the next meeting. We can take a vote again. And, because that'll be 29 days from the day. So we can do another vote at the next meeting. And then, so then in January is when the next, the new Chair could be decided by the Selectmen basically over the holidays.
Well, I was gonna say the other option, well, the other thing we can do when we get to Agenda Planning, even though it's not technically on tonight's calendar, after our budget report, if we decide we need to have another meeting between now and then to have discussions on some of the budgets, since we just got budget guidelines, we can also have that discussion then to add that on. So if we, if we want to do that in another week or so. Okay, so since we're not going to take a second vote, we are going to move on to the public hearing of tonight's meeting. And we have public comments and one speaker who has signed up, Bernadette Rivera. Are you here?
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board Members and Greenwich Community. My name is Bernadette Rivera, and I've been a Spanish language teacher for the last 19 years and a teacher here in Greenwich Public Schools for the last 11 years, primarily at ISD. The budget proposal to remove the three billets from the FLESS program and to shift it to the middle school will drastically impact the ability to deliver a rigorous world language program at the elementary level. At this point, it has been well documented that language learning correlates with higher academic achievement. Similarly, there is no shortage of studies documenting the cognitive benefits of learning a foreign language. Currently, our elementary schools are among the mere 25% of elementary schools nationwide that offer foreign language instruction at the elementary level. It would be foolish not to see the direct correlation between FLESS instruction and the AP success rate that GPS celebrates. Dr. Jones, in your presentation on November 2nd, you shared a slide indicating the upward trend in the AP scores across the academic subjects, including world language. I'd like to point out that world language is the highest, has the highest success rate among them all. And if that data showed, does not show, excuse me, if that data does not indicate a level of student preparedness for a future beyond Greenwich Public Schools, I'm not sure what would. It is the mission of Greenwich Public Schools to quote, "educate all students to the highest levels of academic achievement." Then any modification, let alone cuts to our current programming, would contradict that claim. It would reduce the status of our language program to that of an enrichment class, which in turn affects the very academic rigor that supposedly sets our district apart. The Board would be short-sighted that having more teachers traveling between schools would have a, won't have a negative effect on the social, emotional well-being of our students. The need for our students to connect with teachers is greater than ever. As a regular member of the ISD community for over 10 years and having done multiple buildings, I can state with confidence that my ability to connect with students and family along with providing challenging lessons in line with the district's vision of the graduate has been proportionate to my ability to not only teach, but get involved in a single community, school community. I implore the Board to ask the questions on what this shift in billet really means for the future of world language education at the elementary level. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers signed up for this evening's public comments. So we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the Board of Education Budget Committee update. And I would turn things over to Mr. Kittle, who is the Chair of our Budget Committee.
Sorry, I don't have any prepared remarks. So I don't know if there was something specific you want, I was supposed to cover here?
Well, I know you guys had a partial meeting and/or discussion. So I don't know if you want to give a little overview as to what some of the, you know, what the Budget Committee's thoughts were, or if you would want to reserve that. Because I think the same day that you guys were meeting, the BET Budget Committee was meeting and putting together their guidelines, which we got after your meeting.
Yeah, I guess the only comment I'd make is the, Blazin' and his team put together a really excellent tool for analyzing the budget using Microsoft Excel, where you can kind of cut it lots of different ways. So it's a big step up from that giant printed out book where it's impossible to find anything. And unfortunately, it wasn't a real budget meeting because we were only, it was just Laura and I for most of it. Oh, sorry, not Laura and I. It was Kathleen and I for most of it. But I think we're still in process on analyzing some things. And we're having a follow-up meeting next week. Well, I'll be back in the U.S. finally, so it'll be easier too. So I don't think there's anything specific in terms of findings to report or recommendations. But we are, I think, getting to the answers on some of the questions. There's a little more work to do.
So I'll just ask you a quick question. Seeing as how you guys are meeting, I don't know what date you guys have set for next, your next meeting next week. And since we were just discussing the possibility of if we needed to add a meeting between now and when we vote on the budget, if you'd like to, if your thought would be that you would like the Budget Committee to then make some, present their thoughts if we add a meeting in between, if you think that would be helpful.
Before the.
Since you didn't have a meeting.
Go ahead, Cody. I was gonna add something, but you obviously finished off.
No, Kathleen, go ahead. Yeah, I don't have a strong view. I mean, I think we could probably address, I think if the Budget Committee comes up with recommendations, we could probably address that in the same meeting or via email or something. I don't know. Kathleen, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think that Cody and I probably have some thoughts that came out of that meeting, which, for example, on that spend the money that were the ARP fund for curriculum. But we can talk about that, I think, during the budget report. Does that make sense? Because I know we had a good discussion about that. And there are some other things that came out of that discussion that would probably be helpful for us to. Okay, so that's, I think, I think that's, we can probably decide offline, Cody, if we need another meeting in between.
Yeah, I feel like we're not going to need another, another meeting for that. Because the things, most of the things are pretty straightforward.
I agree. And I think we're probably at the point where some of the things we can, Cody and I can present, we could get your feedback as a, tonight even, when we get to the budget report.
Okay, so if nobody else has anything to say, I don't know if anybody has questions specifically for members of our Budget Committee that had a non-meeting this week. If not, we can move on to our next agenda item. Okay, so our next agenda item is an executive session to discuss collective bargaining. So I'd like to move that we move into an executive session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the Board will be moving into an executive session. I'm sure there will be a little note on our screen and then we'll return shortly.
And someone, someone's gonna call me, right?
Yes, we will, we will call you.
I think our, our agendas.
Well, I was gonna say we're, we're back from executive session, so. And just as a note, there was a discussion that took place in executive session, no votes were taken. And our next item is the budget report is the 2024, 2025 appropriations, please. I know he's here somewhere, he's hidden by the podium. Also, he's here somewhere, I know he was here.
Oh, thank you, yep. All right, I'm gonna just share my screen. Here. And hey, Jonathan, I have a handout. Do you think you could help me with that handout up there, the ARP? Um, so this is just the update and last time we had, I think we're trying to figure out a better way to print this thing. Um, we did consolidate it to one page because what it actually kind of looks like is just behind you is this is the multi-year. Um, view, this is the actual appropriation, so we'll print this off on a PDF, but what I have printed. Um, is just the, the summary right now, so we'll have to do some re-appropriating. Um, this is the final year of the Board of Ed, American Rescue Plan Funding. We are, uh, it needs to be, it'll cross fiscal years. Um, it has to be fully encumbered, um, in September and it will have to be fully liquidated, uh, by January. It has to be fully encumbered in September and it will have to be fully liquidated by January. The. Main, you know, bulk of spending, I think there's not that much that has changed on ARP since the last time you saw it or voted on the appropriations. There's some savings that can be reallocated in a few different buckets on the. Basically, what you'll see, the the totals under salary, the human resources, that's largely this fiscal year. As the salaries are being drawn down under each payment. We have a few funds that will journal voucher once we're over budget for the substitute pay and also the. Custodial overtime. Under. Really, you know, there's not a lot to go through under. The facilities, kind of the main thing we'll end up reappropriating are the. Funding, we're gonna see, I'm waiting to see where what Dan status is on the HVAC. This is the. Glass Hall HVAC system, if we need to use that hundred and seventy five thousand, or if we can appropriate that somewhere else. The Community Connections renovation. This was, we put in, you know, Dr. H and Dan Watson, put in like an apartment style at the Community Connections building. That is done, so there are some savings there. There's still some last minute items to purchase for that program, some, you know, more pots, pans. And that kind of stuff, but not major substance left to that renovation, so that'll be some additional funding we'll be able to reappropriate. And then in the supplies, we're coming up with a plan. You heard that we're gonna. You know, basically, potentially at the Budget Committee level, we've been talking about reappropriating. The eight hundred thousand dollars on Row fifty that was put in there last year. That was primarily as a placeholder for the impact of the reading waiver. And what we talked about with the Budget Committees at this point with curriculum. You know, it would make more sense to use that to advance our investment in curriculum and basically. You know, offset the funds from fiscal year twenty five, about eight hundred thousand dollars. That would bring our budget from six point five to six point one, and we could accelerate that purchasing. Mark's team has put together a really detailed execution plan for those curriculum materials. There will be a challenge both on my team and Mark's team as we'll go from needing to execute. One year of curriculum material to purchasing two full years of curriculum material. You know, running, you know. This, this, just this funding right here is about, you know, over, you know, nearly a million dollars. That's a lot to execute through the warehouse and through purchase order process and all of that to liquidate those funds out. So it'll be a lot of work, but I think we have a really organized plan for executing those curriculum funds. There's not a lot else to talk about on ARP, so, you know, I just shared this tonight. It's not that substantively different from the last time you've seen it. But I'll take, I'll take questions. Karen.
Simple question, since I know we have to. Use this up by the, by January first, right? You said. We're not leaving anything on the table.
January, it has to be fully encumbered by September and it has to be fully liquidated by January.
Yeah, that's what I, but we're not leaving anything on the table.
No.
Maybe a penny.
Yeah, well, probably it might have a rounding error problem, but we, what we have right now, and it's what we just have been meeting on this week, and Dr. Jones has been coordinating with. Kind of the whole academic side of the team, and I've been coordinating with the operations side of the team, the warehouse and Kimberly Castora, our finance manager, and she's the person that manages the ARP grant for us. Is we have, you know, three million dollars if you take out about the million. And a half in salary, the rest of that is funding that has to be executed through action, so.
So with the additional amounts that are here that are able to pay for. Teachers. And other resources, that won't impact us until our budgeting year of next year, when we're going to have to figure out how to manage that. Because that will be in a, because we've been able to pay for. Their salaries and. Our human capital essentially out of ARP, and so once ARP's gone, we'll have to absorb that into our budget, which is not impacted this year. It'll be impacted. The next budget that we'll be negotiating.
No, it's in, it's in, so for this one for salaries in twenty five, the budget that's before you now at the six point, which adjusted is six point one percent. That includes the transition of these.
Oh, it does. Yeah, okay.
Yep, because even though this crosses partly into next fiscal year for salary, you really can't. It needs to be fully encumbered by September, so you can't use it during the liquidation period on salary. It's kind of like the liquidation period is. You buy books and then they don't actually come in till November. It can't be like salary that didn't happen yet. So the budget before you, the main driver for the GEA headcount increase is the absorption of these positions, which are primarily special education. And my understanding would be, and Dr. Jones can speak better than I can, but. That with the the population increase in special education students, we've really been fortunate to have the ARP funding because what was initially thought to be. Supplemental services to respond to the pandemic have kind of absorbed those caseloads and the growth of the population. And we haven't had to necessarily staff those on operating. And that's why you'll see we're down to like the eleven positions, you know, that will transition from ARP. All, all special ed driven, except for the the financial analyst that are that are transitioning.
So do you have the the number? Of teachers that are then shifting off of the ARP that will impact our budget? What is that, that number? Whether it's teachers or other staff, if it's teachers, social workers, paraprofessionals. What is that number of individuals that's shifting over from the budget from ARP funding from this year that'll now hit our budget? For next year.
Should be eleven point two, but do you have that? And it's in the front page of the budget book? Eleven point eight, eleven point eight. It's three, it's three sped teachers. It's a speech, well, it's actually right in the in the budget book. It's the. Let me just pull this up because I'm having a hard time reading it. We have three social workers, three sped teachers. ALP, the financial analyst. The.
It's the part of it's on three, right?
It'll be easier to read it off my budget book, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what this is for page, on page three, when it says in FY twenty five proposed budget, when we include, you've got the reductions and the additions.
Yeah.
And you're saying that's the total of eleven point eight people.
Yes. Do you have it up?
No, I would just say the three point three ALP is what's discretionary that we had on in the budget presentation for the board to make a decision on that.
That's the science. Yeah, yep, the ALP hours for the science.
We chose to to leave it in the budget because we feel like the board had for years asked us to enhance science in in elementary ALP. And it actually has been able to do what the board wanted it to do, but it does come with a cost, of course.
Any other questions on ARP? If, I mean, if you take a look at it to send me some questions as you go to digest it. I'll upload this as a PDF to.
That's what I was gonna ask, because it's not on.
It's not on Board Doc, so that you can see the kind of zoom in on the computer on the multi-year version of it, because we, Kim keeps it broken out by fiscal year. It's not, it's not a multi-year grant, but.
Does anybody have questions? Cody? I don't know if he's.
No, no questions for me.
Okay, anybody else have questions specifically on ARP, or would you rather wait till it's posted? We have a little more time to digest.
And that report with that one, that one pager, that's what we have been, we just added last month and we'll put in, so you'll actually see this again at the business meeting. This will be in a monthly financial report, the ARP totals, so you have it in two weeks.
And if we have any other questions, I assume you can also add them to the budget document if if there, if it impacts FY twenty five, twenty six as well. So if nobody has any additional questions on this report, we can move to the Superintendent's Proposed twenty four, twenty five Operating Budget, which is our second read. I'm happy to turn this over to Dr. Jones. Um, we did send out the Q and A yesterday, making sure everyone saw that. I know, I realize it's twenty three pages of questions, and there are a lot of links in there, but. If you have any questions or clarifying questions that you need about the, any of those answers, we're happy to do that. And Blaze, are you, do you have some slides you want to share? Okay.
Here, we're gonna run through, we're gonna run you through. A PowerPoint that the Budget Committee saw. It'll, we're gonna keep a brief version. But I think it just conceptually kind of helps. Drive home kind of what we're talking about. Patrick, our Budget Management Director, for those of you that don't know Patrick. I have to share my Zoom screen for you. Kiki.
Blaze, do you have a printout of this?
I don't.
Okay.
But we will post this on Board Docs after. Okay, so I am going to hand it over to you, Patrick, for a minute, if you want to drive.
Yep, sure. And then Blaze, you and I can kind of like go back and forth.
Yep, yep.
If you see anything that I missed, so. Okay, so through the discussions, we have some combat with the Budget Committee discussions about some of the analysis that we want to do. So in here, what we put together is a set of charts to go through to understand how we nail down to kind of like look at the ways to kind of like dissect the budget for the twenty twenty four to twenty five school years. So in here, we put together the budget by the school locations where you can see kind of like how to cut between. The personnel salary, which is kind of like related to the union contracts, and then the other things outside of the salary, we put it using a term called discretionaries. So the discretionary in here, you can see in the elementary school is like sixty five thousands to one hundred thousands run numbers. It's kind of like their school level per pupil allocation dollar budgets. And then middle school you see is is about. Two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar for their amounts that includes their PPA and also their athletics activities. And then in the Greenwich High School, also the same thing, the per pupil allocation athletics. And a little bit of the wind drove transportation expense in here. So all in all, you can see at a school level. Total on the, on the budget, on the twenty twenty five personnel is one hundred twenty six million dollars versus on the discretionary is talking about four million dollars. Okay, so, so that is at the school level. And then when we look, look at the per pupil allocations, where you see Tony presented the graph on the left-hand side last time. It is where you see the per pupil allocation dollar across the previous. Thirteen years. I mean, basically, there's no change. There was a dip in the high school PPA. In this year, twenty twenty three to twenty four budget, but then on next year's school budget, we are proposing to restore it to the original levels. But basically, it is kind of like all flat throughout, and basically you see high school, middle school actually has a slight decrease versus the history. Versus elementary school has been at the two hundred and twenty five dollars. And then the orange line that you see is kind of like inflation adjusted, and that's where, I mean, it is kind of like the purchasing power is even even lesser than years ago. And total on the table on the bottom right-hand side, you see it's two point seven million dollars as the total for the PPA allocations. Out of the one hundred ninety million run number of the total school budget, including the salaries.
And and for context, for for those listening and for the new board members too, the per pupil allocation is how we basically fund all of the discretionary spending by school. So it's a, it's a flat rate allocation that's set, so it's two sixty five per student. We take an enrollment on a flat day that gets treated for everybody. The same, so it was nine, one, and then the principals get the discretion of that funding. They break up the funding at the school level. And they do it in coordination with, you know, like the curriculum, you know, obviously the chief curriculum officer, but they get, this is the funds that the principal really get to set at the school level.
Okay. And then next one is the same layout that we look at the school, but now we look at the district-wide programs at the half mile. So we break this line into the program spending where you can see again the salary versus the discretionary. This is where this is really the spending at the district level that we didn't have the guidelines to the program coordinators. But this is kind of like their needs basis to kind of like come best on kind of like what they need at the, at the program level. I highlighted some color code at the bottom of the chat because there is comes to some. Rearrangement of the Superintendent Office, the Deputy Superintendent Office, and also the Chief Officer of the Curriculum's Budget in terms of the numbers. Where you can see on the bottom left corner in this chart, it explained in the current twenty twenty three to twenty four budget. We have three distinct program for the office of the Deputy Superintendent, the Chief Officer, the Curriculum Chief Officers, and also Superintendents. Next year in the twenty twenty four, twenty five, you see that. The Office of the Curriculum Chief Officer is taking up the Program sixty eight. Program seventy is zero outs because it is kind of like moved into the sixty eight. And then the Office of Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendent is consolidated into the Program seventy four. That's why when you look at the top part of the chart, you do see that the Program seventy four Superintendent has a seventy six percent year-to-year increase in the salary. That is because of having Superintendent and also Deputy Superintendent's salary into the same program next year versus it is not in this year. And then on the discretionary, same thing, we also consolidated some part of it. Of the discretionary spending in the Deputy Superintendent into the Superintendent's Program line for the twenty twenty five. And when you look at, going back to the previous chart, when you look at the discretionary on the Program sixty eight. You also see there is a one hundred fifty seven percent increase on the discretionary. But then on the next row, you can also see that it's zero out from eight hundred forty eight thousand to zero dollars in twenty twenty five.
Yeah, and the reason that we're just calling that out too is, well, one, I think these are larger dollar amounts, so they're fairly substantive. But there, you'll see a lot, if you're looking in the book line by line, you'll see a lot of accounting changes. And what we're doing is trying to simplify it. We've, we've really been working closely with all the principals and the program coordinators. We have just, you know, twelve to fifteen thousand different accounts, and it's just a level of. Accounting that's just completely unnecessary, like at the elementary school level, that sixty eight thousand dollars was was being divided up into like three to five hundred accounts for the principal to manage. So there's like a hundred dollars here and two hundred dollars there. You're just doing tons and tons of transfers, so we consolidated. Programs like, you know, the principal at the elementary level, rather than having him in all these tiny little buckets, you'll see a lot of accounting shifts. And they're moving everything into just one bucket. The principal can manage the seventy thousand dollars in that one budget line and not divide it up. And and we're doing that here too, kind of making these kind of redundant programs that reduces the numbers of transfers and just cleans it up. Karen, I know you.
So this is the quick question I had when, when you went back to the. But, oh, no, I had, I had my hand up beforehand. So for the per pupil spending, because I noticed, I'm gonna just look at elementary, because it's two sixty five all the way down through the eleven.
Yep.
You know, we also get obviously separate funding for things like Title One, so where is that accounted for in here for some of the Title One schools? Because that's. You wouldn't account that for per pupil. That's completely.
This is how, this is how the operating fund funded by the mill rate funds the schools.
Perfect. I just wanted to see it, so it's not, I want to make sure it's not.
This is not spending per student. This is budget. This is how we fund with A. That's a good question. Yep.
Um, can you go to the next slide? So in your consolidation. Is that something similar to nursing where we see a three hundred percent increase? So would I see a corresponding decrease in a? In some other line?
Yeah, you'll see it at the, at the, so we, nursing was, is a, it's a district managed program, but it was across every school's account. So if like a nurse worked at that school, that nurse's budget was there, that was there, that was there. We moved all of the nurses to be in seventeen, which is district wide. And then they have a nursing manager, Jessica, she has everything in one bucket for herself. So you'll see at every school, you'll see nursing going to zero, and you'll see a huge increase at the district program. Because everything's now just in one bucket, and you can see that nursing, the nursing budget is right here.
So that goes to some of the other questions I had where I was like, yeah, I seen.
That'll answer a lot of your.
Yeah, where I had some of the questions, like why is there, where did this zero?
You'll see, especially at elementary, you'll see it going, like, it looks like art is going to zero at almost every single elementary school. It's not, it's because they were putting, there, there's, the principal has the discretion to still spend professionally, but. But the principals were asked in prior budget years to take their per pupil and divide it up like a year and a half in advance when we're doing the budget into all these tiny little buckets. So he or she will still spend the money, you know, on, as it's needed on our, on math. We're just not requiring them to, to break it out all across the board like that in little tiny subaccounts. Because what would happen is they have, right now, they put together three thousand dollars in this account, but then it turns out they need it in a very similar, like in music, and now they have to do a budget transfer to, to do that. And it's like a huge level of paper for like doing transfers for two hundred and fifty dollars.
So we're making this change just so that they don't have to consistently do all the paperwork for transferring because only reason I'm asking is I want to make sure that there's equity across eleven elementary schools. You know, when it comes to providing the students with art, music, all the other fun, you know, non, you know, main learning.
The funding mechanism and management itself, there's no change. It's an accounting change only.
I just want to make that clear for those who are looking at this. Otherwise, that's why I'm asking.
We've been getting that question and I get it often because it looks like, wait a second, are you cutting X program? It's not, it's.
Well, that's the question I get. And I'm like, I think it's just accounting. And so we're not, we're not reducing these programs at schools. We're just changing the way we're presenting the, the funding. But I wanted to make sure that it was clear to others when they're looking through our budget books and our documents that, you know, when they, they look at the numbers going up at the superintendent's office, they were actually merging two budget lines when you were reducing things like art. It's not that we're getting rid of art. It's just that we're changing where we're placing those funds.
Tony's not getting a two hundred seventy thousand dollar increase in the regular salary.
I made him put that asterisk on there.
So you really wanted that salary noted. The, we're merging people in there and there's a lot of accounting changes across.
I'd like a two hundred and seventy percent increase in my salary of zero.
Okay, so I, I think the main, just to kind of, we'll, we'll pick it up a little faster, but the main point as we get into is this slide, which I think is, is quite helpful. And I'll let you talk.
Yep. And this line is actually kind of like what you done, kind of like where the budget is split into the different bucket. And where you see kind of like where the decision can be made in terms of making an impact to, making a different decisions to impact on the budget. So again, the personnel salary is in total, if you look at the twenty twenty five column, it's one hundred and forty six million out of the one hundred ninety four million budget. And therefore left behind is the discretionary for the forty seven million dollars. Out of the forty seven million dollars, eleven million is for transportations. And then you kind of like take away the facilities maintenance. And then the school per pupil allocation that we talked about previously, that take away the one million, six million and three million of the discretionary budget. And then athletics is the one point two million for the discretionary where it is the five percent year to year increase. The five percent year to year increase is talking about the sixty one thousand dollars. So, so without that, otherwise, the left behind is the district wise programs and functions. The administration is two point nine million minus eight percent year to years. Special education is thirteen million dollars in there. That is a two million increase on a year to year basis that kind of like address on those out of district tuitions reimbursement and then also the constellations consultancy expense. And then, so otherwise, when you look at it, curriculum is the three point eight million where we will use eight hundred thousands, eight hundred thousand of the ARP funding to accelerate through the ARP bucket. And then IT MIS for two point five, one point eight million for the day sub. And then seven hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty thousand for the yes, extended school year, summer school. And then left behind is really the tiny bucket of the four hundred eighty two, four hundred eighty two K for the others. So these kind of like, the where you can see when it kind of like cut it down into this view, you will see where kind of like the discretionary budget is kind of like nailed down to a small, small number of controllable areas that you can see the, the budget is about.
And what we're calling discretionary is not necessarily, there's just not like, you know, necessarily, it's not like a fluffy item. It's just things that are driven by policy versus things that are driven by, by, directly by salary in the labor agreements. And it's just to help you break up those two different frameworks of how to think about it.
You might mention like the example of transportation.
So transportation, right? That's a good one. We have a fixed contract right, right now. We know the exact cost, but the routes are driven by, you know, board policy such as the distance that we have from school and the, the number of, I think, services that we provide later in the day. Those are fixed pricing in the transportation contract, but they are policy decisions that can be adjusted to affect that overall pricing. So it's not like, you know, like a settlement that we have in special ed. If we have to pay fifty thousand from a court order, we have to pay fifty thousand. These are, we have contracts for, but those services are variable based on the policy. And some of those other pieces will, will kind of be the same elements as you go. Like athletics was another one we kind of talked about where there are, it's not a point where staff really could make this decision because you're really talking about programs at this point. The increase in supplies and tennis balls of sixty thousand dollars is not going to make a difference. But if you wanted to change program offerings, that's really where you would see the savings. If that's what you wanted to see.
Or like pay to play.
Or, or different programs like pay to play. These are all policy decisions. And what we're really just trying to drive home is not even necessarily recommending. I think it's trying to break up the, a, a budget book is kind of Cody points out, that's not necessarily useful to really look at it because of the way it's kind of, it's really detailed and broken out, but kind of our thought process when we were going through as an administration, putting the budget together and really driving home where the decision points are left to make. And, and there's really not simple, like the staff level decisions left that would make substantive change to the budget. They're all really significant, you know, program level decisions that are, are worth a discussion. We'll keep powering through here. I don't think we need.
And then these next three pages are the year to year driver at the kind of like spending items level. I think it can, you can read through this and then see the, 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 the driver of the spending. This is where we talk about the ARP funding for the eight hundred thousand dollars. This is where we are kind of like accelerate some of the spending at the district level, select the programs for the acceleration of the curriculum enhancement. So this is the identifier area that Mark and his team identified. And then this will be a, a one time impacts to the twenty twenty four, twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. And then this will need to kind of like, just to think about that it needs to invest in this back in the following school years on the operating budget. The case to five car size guideline comparisons to the, to the regions in the Connecticut here. So that is another piece of additional information that you can make reference to. This is the absence, the tipstress absence analysis where I think it was Cody asking the questions, we lay it out to kind of like the absence data in two years to kind of like for apple to apple comparison in the month of November's. That's where you can see kind of like the patterns of the leave by the day of the week and then in the four weeks in the, in the November month. So you do see that, I mean, we do observe that. I mean, there is a higher kind of like absence number of absence on Fridays, that kind of like the the general pattern that we see throughout the two years.
And, and I think the big thing you'll see, and it's not necessarily, you can just actually start to see it here a little bit, but through a better analysis is that just post COVID sub rates are, are just significantly higher. One of your main budget drivers this year is we talked about earlier is we're, we're changing the day sub budget, which has been under budget by nearly a hundred percent since the start of the pandemic from nine hundred and fifteen thousand to one point eight million, which is where it's been running. It's been one of the main sources of budget freezes. We've had American Rescue Plan funding to help fund some of that, about, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. But that's one of the main, that's one of your main budget drivers this year and something that's not even necessarily programmatic driven. It's just to help cover what's been steadily a high subuse rate.
Yep. And then we also put together a print shop expense analysis because in the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget assumptions, we are assuming we are moving our pin shop models to be a hybrid model. Hybrid model means we were going to have a third party outside printing companies to do the printing where we only maintain a, a person in the bottom of S to kind of like as a coordinators between the requests in the organization versus the, the interactions, the relations with the outside print company. And when you look at kind of like how much we have been spending on the pin shop in the last three years, you can see that on the expense, it is really coming from the people expense, this regular salary, temporary salaries, and then renting the printing, printing machines, the equipment, and then the printing supplies and then the, the maintenance employee benefit. And then when it is being printed, they are getting the cost recovery and then the net expense to us is about three hundred thousand dollar to the print shop expense throughout the last three years. And finally, this is a comparisons of the ton of Greenwich budget guideline that was published. And then you can see the six point five percent year to year, it, it was the presentation on the November second for the one hundred ninety four million. We take away the eight hundred thousand by utilizing the ARP budget that becomes a six point one in order to get to the four point three percent guideline from the ton of Greenwich. That means it will be a three point nine million, four million, run number four million reductions to the number presented on November second. Or it is a three point one million, three point two million versus after we take out the ARP budget fundings. So that is the required reductions from where we are today in order to get to the four point three percent of the guideline from the time.
And I will say that, one, it's been a huge help with Patrick and Kim who have been doing a, a large amount of analysis and really building out our capacity to do that. And we've been having, these are, this is kind of a high level summary of a lot of the conversations we've been having with the Budget Committee. And the Budget Committee has been really helpful in helping direct our team. Since we have so much to talk about in such a short period of time, I, I will say that they've been really helpful in helping us direct our resources on which type of analysis that we should be focusing on. So that's kind of some context for why, why we're presenting today. What's different from what Tony presented when she presented the budget?
So I'm just going to put this out there before we start our discussion to ask Dr. Jones to meet a four million dollar reduction to what you presented to us. For, for those who are watching from home, what does that mean? You said three, didn't you say three point nine?
It, it's three point nine, but if we, if with the ARP funding that we're going to accelerate and use to, for the budget reduction, it's the three point one seven.
It's really, yeah.
Okay, so three, so let's go with three million dollar reduction because you said three point nine was up to four, but just, just again, right? Well, no, I was just following from what you had said. So without the, because we have ARP funding that we have to use, but and then after that, that's gone, then we're in that boat. So either way, three to four million dollars. At some point, my point is, is that's a big number. I remember the last time that we had a reduction that was given to us with interim superintendent Mayo, and I know what his recommendations were to meet such a reduction. So I'm just wondering for those out there who weren't around at that time, what that means. I mean, I, I, I know he, he was, we were talking about changing in class sizes. They were, you know, increasing class sizes because we'd have to reduce staffing. We were talking about the discussion of getting rid of middle school. You know, after school athletics and all sorts of other larger line items to meet that number. So I, you know, that was several years ago. I'm not sure what what that means to you.
Well, I, I think it, you know, it's a big number. And not only is it a big number, but when we go into look at even programming or reducing any staffing areas, you don't reduce the hundred and twenty or hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary because they'll have seniority by contract. So it's going to take more positions to actually get to that three point two than what we usually would say, okay, your average salary is a hundred thousand. So it's a challenge. It's, it's all, it's programmatic and it's people. And I know in the guidelines, they, they ask us to do it just through natural attrition. Three point two is not going to be done through natural attrition. I can assure you that. And, you know, we will be as thoughtful and, and, you know, as we can in what we put in front of the board. And I know we had some things we're going to, you know, talk about tonight, Karen. I don't know if it's a good time like pre K ratio. You know, do we consider changing the ratio again? That would not necessarily reduce a position, but it means we're not adding a position and it changes the way we're, you know, programming going forward. So there are some items like that, but we're talking about, you know, some pretty big changes for the district.
Want to stop? Oh, yeah. Yep.
Misto.
Yeah, do you, I, I just kind of, I mean, I've been privated a few budgets now, but also being on the Budget Committee, I feel like I have had the opportunity to analyze these numbers a little bit more. And when the budget guidelines came out, I guess yesterday after our budget committee meeting, a few things, I guess. One, I like that you were able to build a budget with what we needed, right? And so that, that I see that's what you did. And a budget is a reflection of our priorities. And I look at, I, I kind of feel like it made me analyze actually when the budget guidelines came out, how they were looking at things a bit more. And we provide revenue to the town, especially as we know, and you've mentioned this a few times before, but I think it's important to get it out here now. Because special ed frankly is such a big increase in our budget. It made me look at that a little bit more. And the good news is that our specialization team has done a great job of getting more and more money back to the town. Unfortunately, we're doing that because it's the right thing to do and it's helpful to the town, but it's not reflected at all in our budget, which is a little bit frustrating because then you end up with not really getting the credit for the hard work that this team has been doing. So I started to do sort of a pro forma analysis that anyone would really do in a normal business setting. And if you do that in twenty twenty four, you start off with a hundred and eighty two million, right? And the money that went back to the town directly again, which in any other town would be coming to the schools under law really, but goes to the town for some reason here would become down three point five. I then also would like to note the fact that the special ed interim, which I know the BET has been good enough to approve, but it is now in front of the RTM is two point one million. That really should be in the base of the twenty twenty four number. Because that wasn't something that was just an ad hoc addition. That was really a change and fundamentally, again, unfortunately, and special education, right? It was, it was both law, state law, and also an accounting change by our, our local law department, things like that added two point one. So if you actually, and I can send these numbers around, but if you actually do a pro forma, the real twenty twenty four number that we're kind of growing off of is a hundred and eighty million. But and then if you do apples to oranges, right, or apples to apples, rather, in twenty twenty five, you're starting out with not one ninety four, two, two, seven, before taking out the ARP. The money you're projecting to get back from the town, because you keep doing it a little bit better each year, is three point seven million. So now you're looking at one ninety. So that's really a growth rate of five point three percent, not six point five. So I actually think it's fundamental that we start to look at things that way because that's actually right. If you then, then I sort of work from there and then we can sort of talk about some of the items. But for me, I mean, the seven hundred sixty nine thousand, I know we spoke a lot at the Budget Committee. I think that's a really good change and something we should consider. So, you know, now I've moved us down to what, five? So, or less actually. So I think if we sort of start chipping away at things like that, we actually aren't as far apart as I once thought. Now, we still are going to have to make some big decisions. I mean, there are the other analysis, I think we learned from the Budget Committee and Cody, feel free to stop me here, is that there aren't that many levers really. And without making some significant policy changes, I mean, a lot of the costs are because of contracts, because of utilities, you have to keep the lights on and special ed. So unless we want to give up on a lot of the investment and that we've made in special education, that's really our biggest lever from what I can tell. And that's an additional two million, right, right off the bat. So that's, I mean, besides some of the bigger items, you're talking about changing transportation or class size or athletics, you know, I don't know, what are you going to do, cut, cut programming? I mean, that's kind of, those are the, the issues you're then faced with to make that big of a move. Okay.
Yeah, Kathleen, just, are you sorry?
Say, did you follow that? I'm happy to send this number around, but
I think that might be helpful. Cody?
I was just going to say, I think there are two things that seem contradictory that are both true, which is I believe there's a fair amount of waste in the budget. I believe there's a fair amount of waste in the budget, but that there are very limited levers on what we can do. And when I say waste in the budget, sorry, I should correct myself, waste in the spending. But most of the waste in the spending is in areas that we don't have the ability to control. Um, that are consequences of, you know, public sector unions and Uh, regulations from Hartford. Um, and so, you know, we're trying to figure that out and Break out all the different pieces of what we can control. Um, and I think there's some interesting things like what we were talking about in executive session. Um, but yeah, it's uh, it It's just, I think it's important for people to keep that in mind that Um, I, I know that's kind of often said, but I think the, the, I think Blaze and Patrick have done an awesome job Breaking it all down. So you can see what six and a half percent isn't six and a half percent on every, or six point one or whatever on everything. It's Um, a lot in a few areas. Unfortunately, the areas that we have, you know, can, can't do so much. And then It's um, you know, less than others. But yeah, that's just general comment. Kathleen, could you share the, I, I know you, th- those numbers, uh, those are pretty interesting, the way you were looking at that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send it around.
That doesn't sound good from outside. Uh, Laura, you had your hand up?
Yes. Uh, so the other lever that the B E T was hoping we would um, explore For savings is um, A study of our facility utilization rates, um, including Um, possible consolidation opportunities, which means they want us to look at consolidating or closing schools. So Um, that's a lever I would really hope we do not have to pull. Um, because you know, we have always as a board And even before I was on the board Looked at never impacting the classroom, never impacting the buildings That our, our education model is predicated upon. So Um, I find these budget guidelines um, Somewhat troubling as I did last year.
Karen? Well, on that point, Laura, I think um, Dr. Jones had done an analysis last year when there was a lot of talk regarding the Overall impact of our, that's Very concerning, um, for those that count here. There's just a lot of alarms and fire trucks going off.
Lot of emergency vehicles.
Um, But I think Dr. Jones, you've done an analysis to show Where we were trending with respect to the number of students in each of the classrooms and when we had Closed Parkway several years ago And what that looked like from a numbers perspective. And it, it was compelling in the sense of No need to in fact, close a school because of where we were trending and how we would move things around. I think to Laura's point, it might be beneficial to dust off that document So that we have that because we're going to be confronted again with the sense of, do we need to close a school? And I think it'd be helpful just to point out that analysis, analysis, because I do think it was compelling In the sense of showing where we were trending and that doesn't necessarily save us a whole lot of money.
Well, clearly they feel differently because they said they expect the B O E to provide the facility utilization Study requested by their other guidelines. So they must feel that we um, have not given them what they've asked for.
I wonder who's gonna pay for that facility utilization study?
They also said we need to reduce our unfunded mandates last year, which this is one.
Um, Yeah, and then I had a quick question.
Yeah, we did provide all the facility utilization last year and we did it by building. And I think that What people forget again is the growth of our pre K program could fill an entire elementary school. And people forget about that. Um, you know, at cost Cobb, where we have a special education program like the unique program That takes a classroom. So I mean, it's over time. You can't just close a building. The children have to go somewhere. And you know, unfortunately, or in Greenwich, we, we've had to move children around when we've had crisis, you know, floods and other things. So we know it's not easy to mobilize children around the district. It's a very difficult thing to do. And you have to look at driving time and all of that aspect, but some of our buildings are over capacity. It just depends where they're sitting within the town.
Just reading the guidelines.
Um, so This is a, this is a point that I've made for years and years and years, and I, Kathleen just brought it up too. You know, we, we get funding back from the state for uh, special education That is supposed to come to the schools, doesn't go, it goes to the town and then is directed back towards us. Um, I know we Have uh, tuition that I think, does that go back also to the, to the town as opposed to us or uh, rental fees? Of facilities? I'm just trying to, how many things, you know, how much revenue is it that, you know, or areas of revenue that we generate? That doesn't come directly back to us. It goes back to the town and has to be funded back into our
Pre K?
Yeah, so most of the, like, so if we're gonna bring in four point one ish million on revenue, Three point seven of that will go back to the town's general fund. We draw down, we can draw down the rental uh, fees, tuition, we receipt that back to cover the labor uh, and electricity cost. Um, the summer school tuition, we draw that back down. That's only down to about fifty thousand dollars a year. Medicaid revenue, we do draw back down the Medicaid revenue to cover the expense of that program. In this budget, we actually um, made a uh, a change to, you know, further fund Uh, the position that does the Medicaid accounting um, through that revenue. Um, so that would be budgeted about two hundred thousand dollars. That out of the four point one million, um, that small handful, that's two hundred thousand, that will one fifty, so three fifty, four hundred thousand. So four hundred thousand dollars goes back to the schools uh, and the remaining three point uh, seven uh, goes back to the, the town of Greenwich. The drivers of that, that other revenue really, like the one point eight million of the special ed excess cost. That's what you were just talking about with Dr. H. Um, and the more You know, that you do end up having more burden on your operating budget of special ed, you do also get a higher uh, reimbursement, you know, rate. One of the reasons we, we, when we went for the interim last year, and it's the same thing this year, is that with that increased operating cost, Um, the town will recoup a, a, a large portion like last year. Um, you know, most of that interim uh, essentially When we went last year for the one point one million um, was covered by the uh, additional um, revenue in the excess cost program.
But the point is, is that money is supposed to come back to directly fund that program and yet we have to ask for Interim funding because it doesn't go to us directly. It goes to the town.
That is correct.
So when we ask for interim funding, when we're, it, that really, that those funds really should be Already part of our, you know, additionally what we're given on top of, not given, but you know, it Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So that's why I'm just trying to figure out like how much it is that we Revenue we create that is then returned to the town as opposed to
Three point seven million in this budget.
Sorry. Did we? Okay. So I, I, I just have a, a process question. So going for, I believe we have to, we are voting on this at our next meeting, which is December fourteenth. And so the question I have is Obviously this board has some difficult decisions to make. How are we intending to move forward? For example, Dr. Jones, you're going to make some suggestions as to what Levers we could pull or trigger on voting, having us taking, voting to take out for those purposes. Is the um, Kathleen and Cody, excuse me, or is the budget committee going to make those recommendations or no recommendations at all? Obviously, right? We could put this forward and say, nope, this is our budget and we vote on it as is and push it forward. I'm just questioning from a process standpoint because we don't have a meeting in between now and the fourteenth. Do, do we need one? And how would we propose to go for? Because I, I feel Like we still have a lot of work to do and I'm not sure it gets done in one meeting.
That's why I had suggested that we might need to add a meeting between now and our next scheduled one. Yeah.
I mean, certainly we could have another budget meeting and I think we will, but I mean, I'm happy to start raising some of the things we're talking about at the budget committee because we might as well. I don't know. I mean, there's been a lot of things we've talked about, right? I mean, with the ARP funds for the curriculum, I think everyone's kind of agreed on that. Yeah. Right? I don't see any reason not to. Um, But then, I mean, there were three other items. I know we talked about the, the adjustment to preschool ratio, the reducing ALP hours, science, um, reducing one other position, right? These were some of the things that we talked about, so I'm happy to start going through it with everyone. I mean, why hold back, right? Right, Cody, you want, you want me to run through this? You want to do it? Up to you?
Yeah, no, that would be great. It'd be good.
Okay. Um, so adjusting pre K ratio, it's currently, first of all, it's already been adjusted, right? From prior years where it saved how many sections in prior years when you made the adjustment?
Seven.
Like seven, all right. Yeah, okay, thank you. And so now you're suggesting, I don't know if you're suggesting, I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're noting Um, that if we change the ratio from sixty forty to fifty fifty, That would save a hundred and eighty four thousand. Is that right?
That's one full section.
And, and I, and I think we're, we're We would be being conservative in our first year estimate just because of the age change in pre K. So there's some unknown variability, or in kindergarten, I mean, so there's some unknown variability there. So Just for twenty five, if you were gonna do this, we were assuming the one, the one section. The one section would be the just shy of the two hundred thousand, the one eighty four.
So I don't, we don't need to go vote, but we can sort of, if anyone has any reaction to that.
So I just um, wanna note that It, it seems as if The reduction to a fifty fifty ratio is, and correct me if I'm wrong in this assessment, is not out of line with Corresponding districts, New Fairfield, Weston, Wilton, Regchfield are all Have a ratio of fifty fifty. So us making that change And Norwalk and Fairfield, us making that change would not be out of line with our surrounding communities. That's, that's correct. We're the only one that was sixty forty and we'll keep trying to get more responses. These are all the districts that are responding to us, but um, And we probably in order to have a fifty fifty, we're sitting at fifteen. So you would probably bump to sixteen. So you could go eight and eight.
And so that would also then help us increase the revenue because we'd be getting tuition from additional students if we did that.
And, and in doing that, I think we continue to look at the budget uh, the way that Kathleen kind of presented it, which is the net impact to the taxpayer.
I uh, would Not be in favor of changing the preschool ratio. I think that it um, It does not provide the kind of attention that children With special needs would need if we're not going to change the staffing ratio. Some, some classes are already over Um, what the ratio is supposed to be, or at least they were last year, I can tell you. So I would not be in favor of Doing uh, making that change to our ratio, especially for our youngest and most vulnerable students.
Karen? Do you mind if I just keep talking? I guess so. Can I ask? Okay, thank you. Can I ask a question? Do you feel that there would be um, general ed drop off with the change in ratio of kids applying?
I don't, I don't think there would be drop off and because we have hundred and fifty, two hundred people on the waitlist every year that don't get a spot. If you went to sixteen, you actually have an additional peer spot. So it might actually help some families access pre K. And our pre K is so much more affordable than community pre K. So I, I don't think it would hurt us. Let me also say next year is a weird year because of that age change. So I just, I don't know, you know, how many are gonna choose to stay in pre K? How many are going to request early entry to pre K? So it is a little bit of a, it's gonna be a tough one to me, I was just here. So just the point, uh, and this is a broader point that I think we can also should consider in these discussions is that You know, we've recently voted on what our tuition costs would be. Uh, and I think we may need to just reopen that up and see if there's any additional benefits In increasing those rates for purposes of how it affects or impacts our budget here. But we should open, consider reopening that up for the discussions broader to this overall budget and trying to Balance the numbers.
Yeah, and summer school costs as well.
You mean for the preschool fees or for the employee fees?
Yeah, both, all of it.
Okay, the only thing with preschool phase, I'd argue you, you have to make sure you have enough of a delta from the private schools because otherwise one would Then choose to go there for a general education student, I suspect, if you're changing that ratio significantly, right?
Well, I haven't priced what it was cost to go to the Private schools, but I think there's probably a pretty wide delta in what we're currently charging versus what it costs to go to a private school. And I, I don't think our Even the change that we might be suggesting wouldn't probably close that gap all that much either.
I just, just, I'm not sure, but just
Yeah, we, we, we talked about it quite a bit at the budget committee level and at the last time we presented it, the, the fees um, and the tuition that we, we would wanna We being the B O E would wanna look at increasing the rates a little bit higher this year with inflation. The, the, the rates across, you know, so you're, the summer school goes directly back to the operating. And then if you're looking at your net impact on the taxpayer, you've got um, your preschool uh, tuition. Um, and then you have uh, the tuition that employees uh, pay, um, you know, to enroll their students. Um, All Board of Ed um, and uh, town employees can enroll their students in Greenwich Public Schools. And you know, they have a significantly uh, reduced rate as a benefit. Um, it's, and it's fifteen percent Uh, basically of, it's a, it's a little bit higher for town of Greenwich employees than it is for the Board of Ed employees. Um, but that's another area that we probably have, I don't think that we've kept up with What are, it doesn't match our cost um, per pupil that it actually is like reported to the state. We've grown slower on the tuition Uh, charges um, than what the actual cost, you know, per student is. So that's something you could look at. And, and those revenue drivers each, I think are both, you know, at least, you know, half a million to six hundred thousand on each of those lines. Covid, I think saw a, a broad about a, and, and Dr. Jones, you can correct me if I'm wrong, a, a lot more uh, employees uh, enrolling their students in their place of employment. Um, so that revenue kind of went from, um, and, and I'm recalling a little bit, but closer to like a three hundred, three fifty Uh, pre Covid to now we're like at like a five fifty, six hundred.
So I know one of the discussions was also to reduce the ALP hours for science with A cost, a benefit of savings of a little over four hundred thousand dollars. My question is, what does this look like? What is the Reduction in ALP hours for science? What is, what is its overall impact like? Yeah, you're moving, uh, you're just moving science, everybody's science in K five back to general education classroom. Um, the addition for um, ALP of point three at all eleven elementary schools is what this number is. So the pre Covid, we had one point seven positions um, at all of our schools. So when we talk about a three point three, It's not actually like a three point three additional like benefits and people, it's pieces across all eleven schools. So it's point three at each school.
Yeah. Um, I, I mean, this is something we asked, you know, the board obviously asked to bring back. I've Been through where we've had help science in the elementary school where we haven't. What's interesting is that then we of course push for it to come back to the middle schools too. But I guess I, I do wanna, Karen Hirsch, you always do this, like, let's work backwards a little bit. And the matriculation of students into the ALP middle school. Plus, you know, it, it's at like seventy percent. It's, you know, it doesn't really feel like we're It's the advanced learning program, frankly, and central in the middle school anymore. Um, so You know, if we work backwards, I mean, what is, what is the participation rate, I guess, I should ask of Number of science, ALP science students. So how much is it a differentiation anymore? And um, for K through five. Because, you know, given what we see in the middle school, I'm not sure that you're seeing the um, I don't know how to put it, but the trajectory that you would have Thought, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to actually ask um, Mark to help us um, Jimmy go to pull the numbers first, ALP science. Do I think that it would greatly impede our science growth for K five? Um, no. I mean, I think it's something that's doable and I feel like our enhancement by the time when our students are getting to middle
And I feel like our enhancement, by the time when our students are getting to middle school, um, we really do have a great program there. We've worked really hard on that and, you know, and and the curriculum team where the advanced science actually has advanced curriculum now. Plus, as a reminder, we've got that whole research component for the kids that are feeding into Andy Bermonte's class. So we have some really incredibly high level opportunities for those students that have really never had that before. Um, so I think it's kind of like you're just delaying really, you know, a little bit of thinking like out of science, but.
Are there any other reductions that you wanted to go over that was, we're discussing Budget Committee?
Um, we didn't discuss any others in the Budget Committee. I know there are some other suggestions now, but we, those were the ones that we discussed there.
Yeah, Dr. Jones, you want me to run through anything else?
Up to you. I don't know if we want to talk about this, or if we want to go to budget, or if we can, we can take it up with the Budget Committee first. Up to you.
I I would think the Budget Committee might want to discuss it first, but that's just opinion. I I I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, that's true. We haven't been at any of the other items.
I mean, because if this hasn't been presented to you guys, and you guys should get first pass. Cody, I don't know if he's, there are his, his thoughts, but.
I'm sure you're, I think I agree with that.
Mike, do you have your hands? I can see, yes. That's the one, the one I didn't say yet.
Yeah, that's all right. They, I'm sorry, I had to switch to remote. Um. Yeah, I think the one thing that I do think we have to face here, uh, you know, the Budget Committee has to to think about, and that's all board to think about. Even with, if we add, if we accept all these reductions, I'm not saying I'm accepting all of them, but if we accept all these reductions, that's one point four um, or so million um, to reach the guidelines, the way that the BET is calculating them. The, um, and I understand Kathleen's point about um, not um, looking at the revenue side. But they, um, we still, we're still, we're only about halfway there. So I do think it is worth the intellectual exercise here um, for the administration to come back and say, where, where, where would, where would it be? Because in a worst case scenario, um, we don't make that decision, and then the BET does. The, um, I think we should, I think we should look and see, so what, what, where, where would, where could, where would these? Um, and I know it might be people and things like that, but I think we need to to have option A, B, and C here. What would, what would, what would a three point one million reduction look like? The, um, what's our, what's our best, best example? I think that is um, a fair conversation that we need to have, because we're going to have it at some point in town, so we should have it here at the board level while we have some control over it.
I I completely agree. That's in the, like, as I said, when, when we had interim Superintendent Mayo, he basically put for, we had a similar discussion, well, I wasn't on the board at the time, but the board had a similar discussion, and he had presented the board with different scenarios of what it could look like, what they, you know, to get to that number, what we would have to do. So, and you know, with, and it would impact classrooms either way, is my guess, no matter what, whatever decisions we make here.
So I remember that meeting, and I remember where we were. And I remember, um, it was also eliminating um, professional development throughout the district. It was increased class sizes at the high school and uh, eliminating intramurals at all the middle, middle schools.
You know, that's what I had mentioned earlier, because that's, it's, it was.
But not the professional development, that's.
And we also had to get rid of, you know, a lot of purchasing for, you know, libraries and whatnot, too.
Yeah, over, over Covid, we did not get any new library books as far as I recall.
Karen, you had your hand up?
Look, I think Mike's suggestion is a a very good one, because one, you know, obviously, Dr. Jones and Blaze, you guys know the budget best. And it would probably, it would be very good to see different scenarios of what things look like and what that impact would have and how we should be looking at it. And I think we should be completely transparent with the community at large as to how that's going to impact the district if we need to make these cuts. Like, I I'm, what I'm not saying is we're going to make them. What I'm saying is what are the levers that we have and what does that look like from a a program and a personnel and supplies, et cetera, component, so that we can also have the opportunity to allow the community to see what that looks like. And we can hear what are their concerns, what do they think is good, what do they think is bad? Because obviously, we will get feedback, and I think that's really important for us as a board members to understand and hear what the community and the parents think is the right cuts or not cuts, and how we look at it.
I think it would also give us time to hear from our, our educators and and others as to how that would impact them in the classroom and think of other ways that we can and look to minimize some of that.
I I will just point out that uh, I I do think that's a good idea and a worthwhile exercise. Time wise, it is November thirtieth. Uh, we did just get the guidelines yesterday. So the exercises we're talking about are are, you know, labor intensive of everybody here, um, and will require likely more than, because right now you only really have one meeting left. So if you're, if you're talking about wanting to get community feedback, um, you might want to also look at, or already be thinking about another meeting, because you really only have one public hearing between now and and the day that you vote, and that's in two weeks from today.
Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think we need to understand just the other thing here. I think we all need to understand a little bit more of the BET's thinking. Um, I haven't talked to them. I know it was a bipartisan vote um, of the Budget Committee. The um, so there's clearly some consensus on the BET that their number is feasible, and I think um, it behooves all, you know, is that we, you know, whether it's Blaze or or Dr. Jones, the rest of us, I think we need to really understand where they're coming from and 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 why they think four point four.
Just a small correction. It was a bipartisan vote, but there were motions that were made by the, I know Leslie Moriarty, for example, that were denied, for example, like adding special education back to the base.
Okay.
Uh, does anybody else have any specific questions? Or comments? Anyone, anyone? Well, as I had said at the very start of our meeting, I I think that there's a good chance that we will need to add uh, another board uh, meeting, whether it's a retreat uh, without public comment, or a meeting with public comment after the Budget Committee has had the opportunity to meet uh, since the guidelines were just given to us after your last uh, non-meeting this week. So I don't know if we want to, I don't know when your meetings are, you, you know, when your next meeting is set. But um, we certainly can have a discussion either here about an adding a date, or alternatively ha- have some dates shared uh, and and pick one. But I I think it behooves us, this is one of the most important things we get to do, is look at our budget and and advocate for the things that we feel our schools and our students need. Uh, and we got these budget guidelines uh, later than I ever remember having seen them uh, in the decade and a half I've been in- involved. So um, I think we need the opportunity to really, these are big decisions.
I don't know.
I I think we're trying to have a budget meeting on the sixth next week, or be- between the fifth and the seventh, let's say, so.
And maybe.
Kathleen, you did something? No? Was that what you were gonna say?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, let's just, if, we're not in the evening, right, Cody? Because I think I have a Christmas party every night that week.
I think we'll be, uh, yeah, I I I have a flexible schedule next week, so.
Okay. Um, that's fine. Okay, so then go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, look, if you guys are meeting somewhere between the fifth and the seventh, uh, we do always have a hold uh, on Thursday nights uh, on the calendar, so I don't know if that's something that works for others.
Central Middle School Concert, December seventh. So both, both my children in it, and it conflicts with our meeting space.
More, more important, I was about to say, we won't have our meeting space.
I can't do the seventh.
Bunsies. Okay, um, so, and I was like, they're evening conferences, I think, right on the sixth. So I don't know if i- if we're going to be able to come to a a date right now, or if we want to reconvene, because I know we don't want to have two meetings in one week.
I have just a timing question, and I apologize for not knowing this, but do we have to vote on the budget on the fourteenth? Because here's what I'm suggesting, because it, while it's getting closer to Christmas, if we were to ha- meet on the following Thursday on the twenty-first to give us additional time, and it's still not technically vacation time yet, um, would having, moving the vote on the budget to the twenty-first and giving us the fourteenth as time for more discussion doable with respect to all schedules in town?
I'm sorry, that week is like shot for me.
Well, I was just gonna say, because the holiday recess is the next day, so many people might have been, might be gone.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we don't have to do it on Thursday, the twenty-first, we could.
No, we don't have to do it on that day. I'm just.
You, you don't think we could do like December eleventh or twelfth for a meeting? I know you said not to do.
There's a RTM meeting Monday, the eleventh.
And how about the twelfth?
Uh, I mean, it depends on when the Budget Committee can meet.
What's our budget deadline?
The budget deadline is the end of the year, but um, I have a.
We're bumping close to that.
Yeah, and I, yeah, um. So, I mean, I don't, maybe we don't need another meeting. I don't know. Or I, maybe if we, maybe if we have a robust budget committee, um, we could share our thoughts, and if we have consensus, then we can do a lot of work on the fourteenth.
My concern is.
Meetings are public, so, so people could see the, you know.
But my concern is with, similar to Karen's, is is being transparent. If we're going to be presenting some major changes that do have impact, we need to be able to give public an opportunity to have comment on that, not the night we're voting. Um, only the fact that we need to be able to have, that that'll be the first time that'll be presented otherwise uh, in a public.
Well, we'll talk about it in the Budget Committee meeting, and if people have thoughts, they can email us.
Couldn't they have come tonight to give us public?
But if we're, we haven't discussed what kind of actual reductions we're looking at. And these are pretty significant, and I, I'm not comfortable presenting them during a budget meeting, a budget committee meeting, and then not actually presenting them in a public forum where we have an opportunity to hear from the public before we have to make a decision in, within that, that night.
Could, could the Budget Committee make, uh, like, so we have the, well, if we have the meeting next week, if we come to some consensus where the Budget Committee takes votes and makes recommendations, we could put together like a simple report of what those recommendations are uh, and circulate that report, and maybe, maybe we can email it out as part of our newsletter to the whole district. This is the Budget Committee's report with a link to provide written comment uh, in advance of at least the fourteenth, and then see what the feedback is and schedule another meeting, but we could, thinking of a document we can create from your recommendations that we circulate to everybody on the email list.
Wow. Okay, well, before I say, Michael Joseph's hands up.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna like, like this idea, right? The, um, and we'd have to, we have to talk to other, other parties in town. But the reality is, we got these guidelines yesterday. Right? We have, as a town, we have an incredibly protracted um, um, budget process. Why we have to now rush and shortchange public comment in the next three weeks during the holiday season seems to me as, as, as problematic. Worst case scenario, the, um, this is why nobody's going to like this. Worst case scenario, if we miss the budget deadline and the Board of Selectmen and the BET have to wait for us, and we meet the first week in January, so be it.
I couldn't agree more, except for the fact that I think under town charter, you have to do it by the end of the year. Is that right? Am I dreaming?
Are they gonna arrest us?
I, I think they might arrest you.
They gave us the board, they gave us the stuff yesterday.
I agree.
Well, yeah, that's what I said, in the history of the time that I've been involved, I, we've never had them so late. They're usually given to us in early to mid-October at the latest. I I've never seen something come in.
September, usually, and then the vote is in October. We've been working on this budget too. I mean, really, if you think about it, we, we started in July. All the principals and department heads did all the work with Patrick at at the department level in September, which is why the draft is usually helpful, because you have some context of what you're going to talk about. And then throughout October, we really did all the, like, cabinet level discussions like two, three days a week, um, you know, so. So a guideline yesterday, it it does, you know, it does compound that, that process has kind of been happening to Mike's point for for like months, um, you know. But it is what it is, I guess.
Laura?
I will just say, these are guidelines. I I think, um, if we come halfway to the guideline, if we come a little bit to the guideline, I think these are guidelines for a reason, and I don't think we should twist ourselves in knots about it. Um, you know, it is what it is. We got them late, and we have a district to provide guidance to and and to run, so. It's what it is.
My, my only thought is that I, you know, we're, we're not going to be able to come to a decision tonight on a, if we need to add another meeting or not. Um, you know, I don't know when the Budget Committee is meeting, and I think we need to have the opportunity just to see what our statutory or town chartered requirements are. If we need to add something, so maybe we would want to table this part of the, if we want to add something, and then we can always, if we need to add a meeting, we can have a a date selected after the meeting tonight.
And I'll just throw it out there, because it very well may be likely that if we can't reach a consensus on the budget, it, to Mike's point, but for a different reason, it could be a four-four vote, and the budget doesn't pass. And then we still find ourselves not making it before the end of the year. So it really makes sense to do as much work as possible to get a budget that passes even through this board. The best way we can, and if that happens to be the first week in January, then so be it. And if we have to take a vote before then that shows it doesn't pass, I mean, I don't think it's probably ever happened, but I'm just throwing it out there. It very well could be a possibility, and we'll have to be prepared for it.
I mean, yeah, so instead of banding this about, um, I mean, this is the last. Oh, yep.
I, Oliver, I just wanted to add that I think getting public comment is really important, and I like the idea of sending something out, but just making sure it is challenging during the holiday season. So I think we need to give the public, like, various different means of communicating their concerns about what it is that we're considering that we might cut. Because I think a lot of people, even if we do do a public meeting, a lot of people won't be able to come.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I don't love that this is you know, coming so quickly at the end of the year here, but, you know, especially with such big decisions ahead of us. But, so I I think we should figure out what we want to do, and it's not going to happen tonight to discuss that, but um, if nobody has anything else, and last call, once, twice, going thrice, no? Um, I know Laura has a motion she probably would like to make.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. A second.
All in favor? Cody's video is off, so just say yes. All right, I'm gonna go with yes on his behalf. Okay, thank you. I didn't vote for him. I'm just gonna, you know.